Okay, back to what you were saying.
Anyone would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Oh, five minutes, we're gonna talk fast. Jan Sploh with the Montgomery County SPCA, and we're located at 1232 State Highway 5S in Amsterdam, New York. We're here asking for $40,000 funding for the Montgomery County SPCA. I understand we are being considered for less. The entire country is experiencing an overflow of abandoned and surrendered dogs. We are a no-kill shelter. We do not euthanize an animal to make space for another animal. In the 23 years of my volunteer services, this is the first to have the kennels full and not be able to service municipal contracts or take in surrenders from owners. We have 70 owners on our waitlist to surrender their dogs, which amounts to 70-plus dogs. The number-one reason for the overflow of dogs in animal shelters is the increasing cost of veterinarian care. Maureen Rossi, she's sitting right there, the president, this is Ashley Weil, our animal shelter manager, and myself met with Police Chief Joe Spencer at the SPCA. We explained the situation with being full and having to turn away, to turn them away to find other boarding. When we turn away a dog from the ACO or police, we contact the ACO when we have room for the dog that was turned away. The dog was not always brought into the SPCA and stayed in boarding. To avoid passing up an available dog kennel, Chief Spencer has asked that the SPCA contact dispatch to let them know we have an open kennel for the dog and they have in their custody at that time. Because a microchip scanner, this is one incident, was not available to a police officer who picked up a dog, they had to bring the dog into the SPCA to be scanned. There was a chip and the dog was redeemed by the owner. It's issues like this that can be streamlined to save costs. Working together with the police chief can lead to savings in costs. I'm not trying to take anybody down for their job, I understand people are part-time, and when we're calling to say we have an open kennel could be that the ACO is not working, and what happens to their call knowing that we have an open kennel? We hired a canine coordinator to assist in the adoption of dogs to free up kennels quicker than we are currently doing. Within the first week, she adopted out two of our long-term dogs, one being there over a year. Our 2024 intake to date is 354 animals. That is 163 dogs and 191 cats. Our total expenses to date for 2024 is $383,850. That is, to make it easy, a cost of $1,084 per animal. Now, dogs are more expensive, well, we'll stick with $1,084, in reality because the care of dogs costs more than cats. Of the 163 dogs we take in, we've taken in this year, 69 are from the city of Amsterdam. That's 42% of our dog population is from the city of Amsterdam's contract. The $22,000 the city of Amsterdam contract covers is less than 6% of our annual expenses. So if you take our cost per animal at $1,084 times the 69 dogs we have taken in to date from the city of Amsterdam, we're looking at our cost of $74,800. Your contract is $22,000. And just a note, so you understand where contracts stand in the cost of taking care of animals, the Mohawk Humane Society terminated their contract with the city of Troy. It was a $100,000 contract. They terminated it because they did not have room for the animals. Our ask is for funds to help with the operating costs to continue taking care of the animals from the city of Amsterdam. That's all we're asking for. We have been, we have asked other municipalities, Town of Florida funded us $50,000 to help with our building. Town of Amsterdam funded $10,000 to help with our building. Montgomery County Legislature funded $250,000 for the building. State Assemblyman Saint Santa Barbara funded $250,000 for the building. Senator Hinchey funded $50,000 for the building. City of Amsterdam, no funds, no funding. What was mentioned was $5,000 as a donation and investment. By the way, donors do not get an investment in return for their donation, it's a donation for the charity to help it do what it's committed to. It's the city that will benefit from the free vaccinations to owned dogs and issuing dog licenses. The city is receiving the fees for the dog licenses. This is a program, and the SPCA can discuss it with the city to fund it. As requested by a council member, $5,000 is expected to cover the cost of 200 dogs, rabies and distemper vaccinations, and microchips. That's $25 per dog. Someone figured it could get done for $25 per dog. Go ahead and do it, if you can do that for $25, we can't. The SPCA cannot afford to give away services, especially to owned animals. We have our operational costs such as staffing, a veterinarian, paperwork, liability, and use of the facility. Think about it, dogs and their owners could be an entire family coming in for this vaccination, is coming into our facility while we're still working around them to continue taking care of the sheltered animals. The city of Amsterdam is liable for owned dogs that are at large, that's running loose, not the SPCA. The SPCA is liable for the homeless dogs in their facility. In regards to offering services for owned dogs, the SPCA offers spay, neuter, and rabies clinics every month.
Jan, I'm sorry.
Oh.
That's okay, but does the council want to permit her to keep going?
I have like two minutes.
Sure, I'm okay with that, thanks everyone.
Everybody?
Okay, I was just trying to say.
That's okay, no, I agree.
Okay, so we have these clinics every month that offer the same services that you're asking us to do for $25 a dog. Our clinics are open to the public, they can opt for the vaccinations, the microchips, flea treatment, worming, and ear-mite treatment. We ask the city of Amsterdam to fund the SPCA to help cover costs of operating the animal shelter. The Montgomery County SPCA is an asset to the city, help us keep it that way. $10,000 funding would be helpful and appreciated, thank you for your time.
I have a question.
You have a question, Jan?
There you go.
Should I say, yes.
This is, we have a contract with you at present time, right?
Yes.
How much, that's 20?
It just increased to $22,000 a year, right?
Over the last five years, how much are we giving you?
Well, it just.
So $16,000 a year for five years, so we were at.
$90,000.
$90,000, yeah.
Does the Town of Amsterdam pay you every year?
Yes.
They give you money every year?
Yes.
Town of Florida give you money every year?
Yes.
They have a contract with you also?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Jan? Okay, anyone else from the public who might want to speak at this time? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Gina Klein, I'm the city of Amsterdam Animal Control Officer, and I wholeheartedly agree with most of the stuff that the SPCA says, like the numbers are out of control, the, everybody seeing it, our vet prices are astronomical, people's dumping of animals and things like that is just worse than ever before. We've certainly had years where we have brought way more animals to the shelter than we have this year, but people just aren't redeeming them. We have trained most of the department on how to use the microchip scanner, because we do have one, and that has helped some, and we have taken into, like trying to take pictures and get them out on social media to try to move things along. Some of the things that we figured would be helpful is to be able to get some of these animals vaccinated and microchipped to help everybody. How long, how long do we spend getting ahold of someone with a microchip? A few minutes, you know, sometimes it's the licensing issue that, that kind of slows things down. So if we could do a vaccination clinic with a licensing clinic at the same time at the shelter, have people come in, they can see the shelter, whether they come in, set up a tent outside, however, you know, get to know the people that are up there, maybe potentially adopt an animal while they're there. But like vaccines, the parvocystemper vaccines, do you remember how many cases we had last year before you moved into the building?
I would say roughly seven to 10.
Right, so, and seven, and then at those points we were shut down for intake because of that, it's highly contagious, it's 86% fatal to puppies, and they, you know, so I, I think that being able to offer these vaccines, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, a tray of distemper vaccines is probably about $180, $190, so it makes it about $750 a shot. Yes, it takes time and energy and effort and whatever, I'm more than happy to help out or be at, you know, do licensing, which will bring revenue into the city. Having those items will definitely get animals out of the shelter faster, so, which will bring in those redemption fees and hopefully get them off the shelter's plate. So I think that, like, they don't necessarily have to spend all the money on one thing, but helping out the residents that are with some of these low-cost programs or no-cost programs in, in lieu of, you know, getting some extra funding would help everybody all the way around.
Any questions for Gina? Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
The issues that we face are, as we tried to discuss with you guys earlier, is that based upon ARCA regs for dispending, we need to have a resolution by the end of the year, and, you know, to, to develop a program such as what they're talking about would take time to sit and talk about it, but, you know, and then negotiate it. And instead of giving them a flat, just giving them a flat donation, the SPCA has said to me that they would be willing to sit down and work with us, but you heard what the costs are for doing what they want to do. So I had proposed that we give the SPCA $10,000, it is not in this resolution because I did not have a consensus from the aldermen to give them $10,000, so I, and you guys said that you wanted some latitude to do that, do things that you wanted to do, so I have left items six and, five and six, six and seven blank on this resolution in front of you today. But as far as the top five resolutions, we have completed, with the exception of the Jersey barriers, we have completed everything we've needed to complete, and I imagine that Mike Clark will have that done by, we've got everything we need in hand, right Louise?
Sorry?
We have everything we need in hand for the five items that we are, that I have here.
Yes, yes.
Except for the Jersey barriers, we're waiting for a price. So that's where we are, so I'll leave this up to the council?
So we just give you a $10,000, right?
We have, I'm sorry, no, we have more than that.
How much?
$28,816.
Twenty?
$28,816 are left. Amongst, you know, the suggestions that were made, I did get back feedback, but there's no consensus in terms of how much or... And again, this, this $28,000 was a surprise to us, a surprise to me, we came in late, I mean, we did our calculations and came up with $28,000, we thought we had less than that.
So what's on the table?
Well, several ways we can go about it, you can give a donation.
Yeah, I'll get. Originally asking for 40.
Okay, Chris, we'll give the photo Chris.
So if the, if the SPCA is willing to discuss the possibility of one or a few of those services as the year, the year goes by, I, I will support the $10,000 donation to the SPCA. I do however think that we should take 4,000, not, or additional 4,000 from the remaining ARCA money to replace the canopy at Riverling Park that was destroyed to vandalism this year.
Okay, and that would go to the, that would be a donation to the waterfront foundation?
No.
Or we would pay that?
The city paid, the city would have to buy it.
Okay.
The waterfront foundation paid for it the year before when the city had a damaging issue.
Okay, so.
But I trust Mike's.
Getting it from a year in. We do have to replace that canopy, so.
And, and, you know, I've said many times, I trust Mike's navigation through this, this thing with the SPCA, and if that works out, then I'm fine.
Well, so that would bring us to 14. Who else did we have on the table?
I always motion give it the $10,000 to the SPCA.
What was the 4,000, oh, sorry.
Well, let's keep walking through what these options are.
The canopy for the, the over, the van shell at the Riverling Park was ripped, was vandalized last year.
4,000?
Yeah.
Do we have an estimate for them?
It was 4,000 last, last year when it got damaged, threw another.
Again, we have to be able to put this all together by January.
Right.
So you need to have a.
I, I think Rob can get a purchase order for you very quickly.
Someone spell canopy.
C-A-N-O-Y.
All right, I'm making a motion for 10,000, I'll just start with that unless there's something else, give it to the SPCA, 10,000.
Can we figure out the, the other?
And then I'll leave, the council's got 10,000, that's 14 out of 28, we got 14,000.
Another 14 to work with.
So I've added number six, $10,000 donation, Montgomery County SPCA, number seven, $4,000 to replace the canopy at Riverling Park.
I can't hear you.
Yes. And that brings us to number eight.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I did finally get ahold of the vendor this morning, and the, the Jersey barriers, I can get 10 for $9,200, that's FOB, we'll pick them up. So that.
You give us another $800.
There you go.
So you change that to $9,200?
$9,200.
Which puts us at like 29 that we're working with. 29, 716.
Seven.
Okay.
If I, if I may, I did, I did mention this to the mayor in an email, Montgomery County's planning a huge bicentennial for the Mohawk River, it's on August 23rd. We are planning through our new program of music on the Mohawk to end that in Amsterdam, so it'll be a constant, a full day of concerts from St. Johnsville to Amsterdam with the kayakathon that they do every year ending in Amsterdam outside the, outside the stage of Riverling Park. If the city would like to, if all of you would like to give some money, some of the additional money to the rec department to help plan an event, that would be a good thing for the rec department and for that program. Okay, again, it's, that's kind of a wide-open thing, and I, I understand what you're at, so you would make a donation of, so an amount of money to who? I think you would have to make it to the rec department, or you would have to make it to the waterfront foundation. Well, it, again.
Try through the waterfront, right? So that's an option. Speed signs you said were an option. Alderman Collins, you had a couple things you were thinking of?
I had also said a donation to the Inman Center, and, but the speed signs are just as important, I think we should go with the speed signs, we need those here in the city.
I agree with that.
Do you have like a price range for that?
At the end of the center.
2,500.
All right, but. Mike, we're talking about those traffic signs?
Yes.
How many, how much were those, Mike, can you give us a number on that?
I would have to look on the speed, the radar signs.
Louis, you could probably get that faster.
Far more than the.
What we pay for those?
I can do a search.
Mike, I believe they were 3,800. Well, okay, but.
Yeah, I'd have to go, you want me to go look?
I would prefer that you go look so we're sure.
Okay.
I'm gonna put 3,800 as an estimate for us to work with while she's doing that.
Do you know the name of the vendor?
I'm just making a, like, a list, right? I'm just using my calculator.
Vender for the street signs, the street traffic signs? No, John J. Thompson.
Okay.
We need that information, please.
I'm sorry, guys, this is a.
Make a motion for the Inman Center for 2,500?
I'm sorry?
Can we make a motion for the Inman Center for 2,500?
Yeah, we give them 2,500 now, so you're, you're saying give them another 2,500?
Yes.
Yep, so that brings us to 13.
I think we gotta go through these one by one, Kev.
Let's just say if we, what we still have, would have left to work with if we didn't agree to.
Let's go to totals, right?
But if we go one by one, then we'll have the, we'll be able to get, you know, which is just too confusing if we don't go one by one. Can we do a poll on this, just a poll, SPCA, is that okay to do, Tom? SPCA, 10,000. One, two, three, okay, that's approved. 10,000 for the SPCA. Then the next one would be what?
4,000 to replace the canopy at Riverling Park.
Now, that is, that is an issue where Rob would have to put that together by the end of the year and place, place some sort of an order. Right? So I, I don't know if that's.
I, that's possible.
Okay.
I say I.
I'm good with that.
One, two, three, four.
Do I have more on yet?
Okay, the next item was $3,800 for, this is street sign purchases?
Let's wait till.
Let's wait on that one.
Let's wait, no, no, it's worth it.
$2,500 for.
No, but just for.
$2,500 for Inman?
2,500 for Inman, I'm a yes on that.
I say I. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's left? What's left? With that estimate would be $9,416.
With the 38, you add the 38. That's just one, yeah, I mean, we might.
The Inman is a donation.
It's 2,500 donation, yeah.
But that's a donation, right?
So is that, what's left now? We've just spent 16, 5.
So 13 to 16 is left, and not including the speed signs, which the speed signs would come out of.
And, and, in lieu of Jan's, Jan only, in lieu of Jan's speech and what they actually cover and how much the differences are, I would like to make a motion to allocate another total of 15,000 to the SPCA.
Yeah, I would second that.
Oh, total, we don't have 15,000.
I would say whatever's left.
An additional 5,000.
The SPCA is $15,000.
I, yes, same.
Okay, any one more vote?
Yeah, I'm just doing that.
Just making sure I have it right, the 2,500 donations to the Horace J. Inman Senior Center.
Inman Center.
Got it.
Good, Portland, Amsterdam, New York. So we are now at 19, 21, 5. And we, we, more traffic signs, and I believe there was a, there was something about a bicentennial celebration.
I don't know how you would, unless it went to the waterfront foundation, they could provide a PO.
Yeah, I, I just, again, I would like to see, is this gonna be a county-sponsored event? It's advertising, I mean, as a county-sponsored event, each municipality is going to be a, is gonna have to come up with their own plan as far as what they're gonna do. But it's gonna culminate with the ending of it at our show on August 23rd. I know it's a difficult, it's just difficult to define, if we just give the money to Amsterdam Waterfront Foundation, I know that we, I forget how much we.
There are other things the foundation can use and what.
I do, Anna, we've had a lot of requests.
Right?
Yeah, thank you very much. The traffic system signs, now these are just for the signs, we bought 10 for $35,250. Freight for, freight was 750. So the signs are 300, $3,525 each, and then we have to buy the poles, right Mike? And the poles I believe are, yeah.
So it looks like we can afford two. With wiggle room for that, because we would have $8,216 left, divided by two is 4,108, which would probably be all in all two signs plus.
Gives us enough for the poles.
With the poles and the freight and.
So what if we set it to be 3,800, or if that number changes, my apologies, but offset the cost of track, traffic system sign and pole acquisition from the Inman.
Oh, I think it would be 8,000, right, we're getting two?
Right. It's gonna be, it's gonna be about, with this pole, and I don't know what the pole costs, I apologize.
They were about two.
They're 700 bucks a piece or something.
Yeah, they were.
They were expensive.
Yeah, I don't remember now, because those are, all right, those are different poles than we bought for the.
That's why I was, I was thinking around 3,800.
Okay, so are you, is there a donation, oh, no, pardon me, is there a donation for the waterfront area, so no?
Not yet, we haven't.
Not yet, so if you have two poles, it's okay to go with those signs over to the waterfront foundation because, you know, this is a one-day advertised event, and those stay up in areas that are needed for.
That's a good point.
Okay, so, what do you have, you have one pole and a foundation, is that what you have?
I don't think we have the foundation, right?
No.
Yeah, so two poles, right?
We, we have 13, 216 left, or no?
We had, we had 8,216 left.
Why don't, let me make a suggestion, why don't I eliminate pole from that, because, I mean, you're, you're, you're going to.
We know that, so, yeah, we'll buy the poles without the fund.
Yeah, we're gonna dedicate it less than 3,800.
Yeah, do what we know.
Okay. Okay, so with all due respect, can we just start from the beginning, there's 15,000 for the SPCA.
15,000 for the SPCA.
There's 2,500 for Inman Center.
There's 4,000 for the canopy, which is gonna go to, and again, that'll go towards the canopy, we don't, because we don't have the final detail on that, is that okay Louise?
Uh, yeah, as long as.
As long as we get the numbers, I'd be the end of the year.
How many signs do we have?
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, so we have.
Let's put one in.
13, 216 left.
One sign?
No, I don't think we have that, because we did, added the additional five to the SPCA.
15, 4 is 19, and 21, 5, you're right. My head hurts.
I'm confused too, here's what I've got, someone tell me what to fix. What I've added is $15,000 to Montgomery County SPCA, $4,000 to replace the canopy at Riverling Park, I've got $3,800 to offset cost for traffic system sign purchases from vendor Traffic Systems Incorporated, $2,500 donation of Horace J. Inman Senior Center. Yes. And that's what I have. That's what you have.
What'd you have for the traffic sign?
3,800. That's perfect.
So what is that?
No, but that's not all our money. We still have $4,416 left.
So let's buy another sign.
We have enough for two signs.
Right, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, let's get two.
Yeah, he only had one in there, so don't say.
I'm gonna make this 7,200 then?
Yes.
Yes. Two signs.
Which. That would leave us with.
Which leaves us with a thousand dollars left.
I mean, you could always dedicate the balance.
Balance to the SPCA.
Yes, yeah, with the balance.
And make it the extra thousand to the SPCA.
How much is it exactly?
16 bucks.
Make it 16 or even, hold on, one person.
Sure, it would leave us with an extra 616.
There you go.
16,600?
Yep. You should be.
All right, so you're, I've got 16,000.
616.
Huh?
Yeah, wait, maybe I'm wrong.
How much for this, we're taking 3,800 for the speed signs, right?
Yes.
6,000. No, I've got 7,200.
Right, so that would leave us with.
7,600.
1,016 left. Oh, 76?
Let's do this, let's do this correctly.
All right.
Signs are 7,600, SPCA is 16,600, Inmans is 2,500, canopy is 4,000.
That's consistent with what I have.
Let's add the 616 to the Inman Center, making it $3,000.
24 and 6, 30,000, we're over. 0000, 000, 12, 17, 14, and 6 is 20, we have, we spent 30,700 if we do this, so we.
Really?
I, I don't think so.
No.
Okay, 16 and 6 for the SPCA, 7,600 for the signs, $4,000 for the canopy.
You, you want 16, 6 for the SPCA, it should be 15,616.
For the SPCA?
Yes. 15, say it again.
15, 616.
Thank you.
Okay, that's where I missed it.
Yeah.
And that was just right to the number. 15, 616.
Yep.
7,600.
Yep.
Yep.
Twenty-five hundred, four thousand.
Twenty-nine, seven, sixteen.
Are we good? What, Louise, what do we need from the SPCA, anything?
I think we just, maybe some kind of a, just a, a award letter, donation letter, just some kind of a letter...
From the city to them?
Yeah, I, I think either way, honestly. I just wanted it signed by both parties and just an explanation of what the, the purpose of the money, you know, the intent. Intended user, that's fine.
All right, so Jan, we'll send that to you. And we need to get, we need to get the Jersey barriers, are the Jersey, yeah, we need to get the Jersey barriers ordered.
Oh, there'll be a PO done today.
And then, uh, we've got twenty-five hundred for Inmans, we'll need the same thing.
Yeah.
And the four thousand for Rob, we're gonna need a quote.
For the, are we talking about...
A purchase order.
Yeah, we need a quote and a, a signed purchase order by the thirty-fourth, yeah.
All right, Emily, I'm emailing this to you now. Guys, I have to get to Amsterdam City Court. Does anyone need me further?
Can you email to Jan, I am adding to, because she'll print it up right now.
I'm ready now.
Do we have a resolution for the rates? Yeah, okay, that's Nest. So we'll vote on Nest first. Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we vote on resolution, resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash one, one, one while we're reading?
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, one hundred and eleven by Alderman Marticello. Resolution approving golf fees and rates for the Amsterdam Municipal Golf Course twenty-twenty-five season.
Similar discussion, in a, in a real nutshell, let me explain. This has been, we've done months of talking about this. Alderman Carpenter and I and the Golf Commission have gone over these rates. And if you look at them, they're very minimal. I mean, you're talking last year from twenty-eight to twenty-nine, forty-five dollars to forty-eight dollars, twenty-five to twenty-seven, you're looking at forty to forty-three, thirty-eight, and some are not even...
Merry Christmas.
Senior citizens are not even increased.
Sorry to leave a problem.
And then you're looking at preferred customers from five hundred to five twenty-five. And what you're looking at is a five percent increase. That's what they decided to do. Trying to generate revenue, we're doing it slowly, without really hurting the golfers. And they had a good year this year, but of course, we're losing money as always. But we had a good year this year. And we had a good, uh, proposal, and we thought this was fair. Five percent increase, that's what you're looking at. And we're probably still below a lot of other golf courses in the area, but we just didn't want to whack the golfers all at once, so we just had a minimal increase.
All the Golf Commission meetings that, that we were at, this came up at just about every single one of them, and not one person that was in the crowd objected.
Well, the other important thing to note, too, is that the golf course is still operating at a deficit, so we need to, you know, this, this will go towards, uh, closing that deficit.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions on this?
Cutter old.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Christomars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye, thank you.
Right now, Jan is gonna print that out.
Yeah, she's gonna print it, yep.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Anyone have any questions other than what's on the agenda we can talk about, issues, I do?
Mike, how's everything working now with the gov, the bids and everything?
Well, we had a resolution the other night, two resolutions, actually. We awarded, you folks voted to award the general construction contract, and you voted to award the electrical contract. Uh, and we're currently advertising for rebids on the HVAC, the mechanical contract, um, and as well as the plumbing contracts. We've got two that we're advertising for rebid. Bid opening for those are January tenth. In the meantime, the, the, the two contractors, electrical and general, that have been awarded are, are getting their funds and insurances together and submittals so that we can get that off the ground as soon as possible, and, um...
Did you talk to contractors, M.A. Schaefer?
The, the, the general con, uh, construction contractor is M.A. Schaefer out of Gillis. And the electrical is Empire Electric.
And the due date, you think, is it August first, you think?
Well, that is what is in the contract. That is their substantial completion date. That means it's functioning as intended. That means you can walk in the door and...
Really?
Order food, and that, so that's the intent.
I always had, hate to ask this question, but if it's not, is there a penalty?
We have liquidated damages within the contract of five hundred dollars.
Thanks, Jan.
Five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Jan.
Which is actually, that's not excessive in age numbers.
Thank you, Jan.
Good job. Excellent.
Thank you.
Very quick, Emily. We had a, uh, did you have a meeting yesterday? Our Community Economic Development Team met with Creative Connections and got good news on their project as well. It was in the paper, but, um, they're, they've collected a, they, they took a two-point-five million dollar project. They successfully put together a million dollars' worth of other donations. And we've sat down and, um, there's a, you know, we've given them a pathway with public monies, which they haven't applied for yet, um, to get to their remaining one-point-five million, and we'll be helping them do that, so.
One million's a...
Yeah, it's in good shape. They look good, they're strong. They're ready to roll. So if we, if somebody would make a motion on...
Make a motion to approve.
If you want to review this.
Obligation of, of...
I guess, sponsor, sponsor.
Yeah. What would I do without it?
A lot less than...
I say, read it.
Two, ten, five, twenty-two.
I'm moving and I'm moving.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, one hundred and twelve by Marson Quanti. Resolution obligating ARPA funds.
So, any discussion?
I like the team effort, again.
Yeah, I like that.